You don't.
Okay, Mr. President, I think we've got. We've got the sign up sheet here. I've got people waiting to speak. So whenever you're ready, you can call this meeting to order.
All right, I'll call this meeting of the Jefferson Madison Regional Library Board of Trustees to order. Today is July 25th, 2022. This hybrid meeting of the Jefferson Madison Regional Library Board is being held pursuant to and in compliance with Alamo County's Ordinance Number 20-A Subsection 16 and ordinance to ensure the continuity of government during the COVID-19 disaster. Before we get started with the public comment period, I'd like to make sure everyone had a chance to read the minutes of the June meeting. And if so, can I have a motion to approve them as they were written?
Still moved.
Thank you, Thomas. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Nerith. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks. One other announcement. I'd like to welcome Martha Ledford, our new trustee from Green County. Thank you very much, Martha, for signing up for this. And as you can see, most of us are remote today. I know that there are some folks who were traveling today who may be able to dial in or may not be able to, but appreciate everybody getting on board here. David, anything else before we get started?
No, that was it. Just thank you, Martha, for your service.
Thank you.
Welcome, Martha.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. Members of the public are invited to comment on library matters. As per published policy, each speaker is limited to five minutes to give everyone an equal opportunity. We also ask that you please refrain from interrupting or distracting the person speaking while they're speaking to make sure that everybody has an equal opportunity. David is first on the list.
Looks like our first speaker is Christopher, you went to maybe or Lindsay.
Winter.
Winter. Thank you, sir.
Where, where's the microphone?
There's no microphone, just project.
Hey, y'all doing? My name's Chris Winter. I'm from Charlottesville. I'm a veteran. I served in the 3rd Division in Germany, 20 miles in eastern order. I'm also a graduate of the most school. As I read the Gula Archipelago. I'm around page 110. Where it described and detailed the sentence. By the communists against their own people. I can't help thinking of the value of history to understand how we turn toward evil or turn toward heaven. I highly suggest that we teach our children to read two, two biographies of each of our founders. Jefferson, Madison, Adams, Washington, James Otis. He's meant to change the world and advance civilization for the individual. Natural law being the formidable groundwork against tyrants and securing individual rights for the citizen. I am here to exercise those rights guaranteed by our Constitution and Declaration of Independence. These motives are based on identity politics. Since the Gula Archipelago was published, there has been no defense for the atrocities stemming from the bourgeoisie proletarian identity politics of the communists that led to over 100 million dead bodies. Now we hear it once again. But now these fanatics use oppressor and oppression and oppressed instead of bourgeoisie and proletarian. They had to change the names because there is no defense for 100 million dead. So they changed the name oppressor and oppressed. Hear that? You know you're listening to a communist. Whether they know or not, let us teach our children how to stand against this new post-modern utopia here now. Instead of teaching them to be angry. The family is the root of our power. In Judeo-Christian civilization, we defend this, pay no attention to the ignorance of those who know no history, know not how to defend the legacy and world-changing action of these great patriots, Jefferson and Madison. Show more respect and allegiance to your community before you become the lackey stock of central Virginia and the entire country. We stand for our founding. To do any less. I don't even want to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. And if I could ask speakers to speak towards the camera here.
Speak wherever you want. Speak wherever you want. Whichever direction. You don't have to listen to him.
Thank you. Next up, John Maguire.
When you're ready.
Go ahead.
All right, greetings fellow Virginians. I'm Delegate John Maguire. I'm an elected servant of the people representing all of Louisa County and parts of Goochland, Henrico, and Spotsylvania in District 56 since 2018 in the Virginia House of Delegates. Just like President Thomas Jefferson, who served in the House of Burgesses, now called the House of Delegates, I'm a Virginian, a business owner, a legislator, and I was born and raised just down the road from here. I care about what our community here in Virginia is going through. We're in big trouble. Woke ideologies, including cancel culture, are dividing us and harming American citizens. I'm here today to be a voice of reason. I'm opposed to the motion to change the name of Jefferson Madison Library. Ms. Anderson demands that we censor or silence Thomas Jefferson and James Madison because they owned slaves. We all agree slavery is beyond evil. At 53 years old, I know no one who would think that slavery is anything but evil. But there is so much more to Jefferson and Madison. Our founding fathers pledged their lives, their fortunes, their sacred honor. Had we lost the Revolutionary War, they would have been hung, and we, including Ms. Anderson, myself, and everyone else in America, would not enjoy the God-given freedom we enjoy today. They gave us a constitutional republic and a Bill of Rights where our rights come from God, not a piece of paper and not man. These ideas of individual liberty changed the world and lifted more people out of poverty and gave more people open freedoms than any country in history. As a Navy SEAL, I served all Americans. If someone saved your life on the battlefield, you wouldn't care about their skin color, if they were male or female, or Democrat or Republican. We're all Americans. How could Ms. Anderson of the Religious Studies Department of the University of Virginia join in a misguided proposal to go after our founding fathers? I wonder who's next? George Washington, Abraham Lincoln? We are so divided as a country right now. I've learned the term woke means academic racism or cultural Marxism. Academic racism is not about remediation of a social problem. It's about discrediting and demoralizing the citizens of a country as a pretext for power and control. Erasing our history and teaching people to hate is not the answer. Divisive terms like white supremacy only add fuel to the fire. You cannot fight hate with more hate, and you cannot fight racism with more racism. We need to come together as a people. What we need is love and understanding. We need to come together as a nation and put our divisive ideologies behind us. Martin Luther King had it right when he said, "I have a dream that my four little children will one day live in a nation where they will not be judged by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character." Though far from perfect, our founding fathers created the foundation that makes America the land of opportunity. We have come a long way, and the country we have today would not be possible without Jefferson and Madison. Isn't it great if you live in a country where a man or a woman, regardless of race, religion, or creed, can work hard and achieve just about anything? Should we consider defunding public institutions that promote or support the anti-American woke ideologies? If you were on a basketball team, for example, and you hate your team, you would win no games. Perhaps consumers and taxpayers, including legislators, should consider more carefully where they spend their dollars. We won't always agree, and that's okay. We can put our differences aside, work together, treat each other with respect, and get things done. In the General Assembly over the last five years, I've been able to get those passed. Each year, with every Democrat and every Republican voting, yes. The answer to bad ideas is better ideas. Rather than censorship, the answer is education and enlightenment. I ask that you dismiss this motion to change the name of Jefferson Madison Library. The names of Jefferson and Madison have a well-earned place of recognition at the regional library in the region where they were born and may live life fully upon honor and praise. So thank you. God bless you, and God bless America.
Before, before we, before we continue. Before we continue, if you have a sign that you'd like to hold up in support or in opposition to something, I ask that you stand at the back of the room so that you don't block anybody's view. Happy to have everybody's opinion, but we want to make sure that people get to see and hear everybody here today. David, who's next?
James Renwick Manship.
Let me turn this because the audiences are both here and here, so I'll try and do both. I'm here today as Thomas Jefferson, or the spirit of Thomas Jefferson lives, or the spirit of Thomas Jefferson, the Christian lives. And some people would say, "What? Thomas Jefferson was an atheist or an agnostic?" But no, he was truly a Christian, and that's one of the truths that we're not told. As founder of the University of Virginia, I chose the motto for the University of Virginia, and that is, "And you shall know the truth, and the truth shall set you free." And those are the words of Jesus Christ from John 8:32. So if I'm not a Christian, why would I choose the words of Christ as the motto for our university? Now, how would my George Washington, or George Washington at his graveside resting place had, "And you shall know whosoever liveth and believeth in me shall never die"? And so thus, that's why Thomas Jefferson is with you today, because I believe in Jesus Christ, the spirit of. Now, there are things that have been said about a lot of things that are just not accurate, and we need to address the truth. All right. I was involved. The three things I was most proud of was the Declaration of Independence, the Statute for Religious Freedom, and founding the University of Virginia. In the Declaration and Independence, I talked about nature's God. The Statute of Religious Freedom was about religion, and the University of Virginia addressed the words of Jesus Christ. Now, I'm here to talk about truths, to share truths. First, academia and media saying that I'm an atheist and agnostic, but I've addressed that. Also, as president, I did a Bible study in the White House. So much for separation of church and state. That's what's called oftentimes the Jefferson Bible. This is an analysis of that 1804 book. Interestingly, that's not in the collections of this library. Okay, and yet this book is published right here in Charlottesville. There's another book that there's only one copy of, and that's the Memoirs of Mount Assala Slave Isaac Jefferson. It was Jefferson's Chamberlain, his right-hand man. And it basically tells the story that Thomas Jefferson was not the father of Eston Hemings, but more likely his younger brother Randolph Jefferson. That's from a black man, Isaac Jefferson, who worked side by side with Thomas Jefferson. By the way, one of the great things about that is Isaac Jefferson said, "You could ask Master Jefferson a question, and he would pause a moment and then walk over to a stack of books on the floor. They'd reach down, grab a book out of the stack, and flip to the page and give you the answer." That gives you an idea of the incredible mental capacity of Thomas Jefferson. That mental capacity went into creating one of the most inspiring works of writing in the history of mankind, the Declaration of Independence, the first certificate of this nation. Now, as a junior member, freshman member of the House of Burgesses, I introduced a bill to end slavery, 1769, 1774, the Lands Act. I did something else about grand, about slavery. In the first draft of the Declaration of Independence, I put something in getting rid of slavery. But the northern members, Franklin in Pennsylvania, Livingston in New York, Sherman in Connecticut, and John Adams in Massachusetts, cut that out. But I had something against slavery in the Declaration of Independence. Then I continued to do that, and Mr. Madison, primary author of the Constitution, Article 1, Section 9, says the migration or importation of such persons would be forever banned in the year 1808. That was a 20-year period of time to adapt to forming without slave labor. But that was the first national cardio in the history of the world to have any limitation on slavery by Mr. Madison and Mr. Washington. And I was their librarian in France, sending them books about Confederacies and republics in Europe. So we worked together on creating this constitution.
Thank you. Thank you. Your five minutes is up, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to turn this around. Pause out to the setup of the room, but it is the Library Board and the Library Board recording record up, so I'm going to do it this way. Speak however you like, but we'll keep the podium. Next up. Don Blake. Is there a Don Blake?
Yes. I like the way that Mr. Jefferson presented his speech there. I'm going to read to you a letter that State Senate to Bryce Reeves sent to, or he had it electronically. He gave me a copy to get up. We're not here. I'm going to read this letter to Mr. Tony Townsend. Dear Mr. Townsend and the JMRL Board, I was shocked to hear of the recent considerations to change the name of the Jefferson Madison Regional Library. To do so would be a transparent attempt to erase history of our nation, like with war monuments, public places, such as the library, this library, should stand as a testament to and a reminder of our past. The name has been attached to the library since the 1970s and stood peacefully as a monument to our forefathers, to two of the most important and distinct founders of our great nation. While a vocal few want the name of the Jefferson Madison Regional Library to be changed, many elected officials have spoken up as representatives of their community as a whole to try and stop this. We cannot allow ourselves to continue ignoring our own past and those who have enshrined into law freedoms we now enjoy every day. While this may be a single library in our state, it is not the first and will not be the last to come under attack. I implore you to consider the importance of remembering the founding fathers and the acts of good they committed. This is not to say we should brush under the rug that Madison and Jefferson were slave owners, but instead that we need to accept our history as a whole rather than forgetting what is unappealing or even painful. As a representative of the 17th District of Virginia and many of the communities that this library serves, I ask once more that you do not get swept up in the efforts to hide a history away from future generations, but instead to preserve it for all those who come after it, and we are gone. Yours in service, Bryce Reeves, Senator, Virginia. Now, that being said, I think there's more letters that will be coming to the board, or already have come electronically. I want to speak a moment for myself until my time is up. I ask you, what do we do with, if we take Thomas Jefferson off of libraries and buildings, do we take him off the nickel? You know, the Monticello from the back of the nickel. The nickel was remade a few years ago with a new portrait likeness of Jefferson. Do we take him off that $2 bill? I don't think I do that. What about, do we take him off that calendars? Do we take the founding fathers and Thomas Jefferson off the calendar? This is a 2023 calendar. We take them off of the calendar? Do we take him off of the Jefferson Memorial in Washington, DC? Do we close that down and destroy it? Do we take Jefferson out of a textbook? Here's a book that's interesting. I bought this book in the Museum of the Bible. And by the way, in the Museum of the Bible, there are only two presidents that I could find mention with their pictures in the old Museum of the Bible, which has seven floors of historical stuff related to Christian history and the Bible. One of them is Thomas Jefferson, the second one was George Washington. And in this book called Liberty and the Things of God, The Christian Origins of Religious Freedom, this book, which I bought in the Museum of the Bible, has only one president, in fact, only one American mentioned in this entire book that is two hundred and some pages. And Thomas Jefferson is mentioned in this book as a hero, in my words, of the freedom of religion worldwide. So what are we going to do? Those people who say Jefferson was a racist, Jefferson was a rapist, white supremacists go home. You know, I feel from the heart of the doctor, because you just don't know truth. You don't know truth, and truth will set you free if you will learn that. If you will learn to read Thomas Jefferson and read the books about Sally Hemings and about the DNA test and about the people who live there. If you read, you can't just listen to what your peers are saying, your friends are saying. It's not true. They're telling you they're filling your head with lies, and you on the board, you are well-educated people. You should know this. I shouldn't be standing here. I'm Don Blake. I'm the head of a Christian organization statewide. We have two people living in Charlottesville who have written books about Thomas Jefferson. Their books are not in your library here. I looked at all those books. In fact, I have in my own personal library more books than you have here in your library. I have more books, or two boxes here, one box full of Sally Hemings stuff, and one box about his religion.
Thank you, Mr. Blake. Thank you. Your time is up.
Next up is Mark Halichuk.
Next, I'm Bill Hawkins. I'm going to introduce Dr. Halichuk, and then he's going to take the rest of the time, obviously, so he knows it's counting to his time. Dr. Halichuk is a professor of philosophy and history. He is the alternate editor of some 50 books and nearly 150 published essays on topics such as ethics, ancient philosophy, science, psychoanalysis, and critical thinking. His current research focus of Thomas Jefferson is acknowledged by several scholars to be the worldwide foremost authority on the thinking of Jefferson and has published 20 books and nearly 150 essays on Jefferson.
Good afternoon. I'm going to read something from a collection of writings on Thomas Jefferson. This was his first inaugural address in March 4, 1801. I think it's his most brilliant writing. This is after the Adams presidency, and you're familiar with the Alien Sedition Acts. People expected Jefferson to come in as president and to take away people's Bibles and to attack the, the strong Federalists and attack Madison because of the Alien Sedition Acts. And when Jefferson comes in, and he was not a powerful speaker, he speaks before the Assembly of People at his inaugural address, and he's barely heard, but he writes, among other things. "Every difference of opinion is not a difference of principle. We have called by different names brethren of the same principle. We're all Republicans. We're all Federalists." This is the part that strikes me. "If there be any among us who would wish to dissolve this union or to change its republican form, let them stand undisturbed as monuments of the safety with which error of opinion may be tolerated, where reason is left free to compadre." What Jefferson is doing, he's supposed to come in like a bull and attack the Federalists for the Sedition Acts and the midnight appointments, those of you familiar with what happened when Adams left the presidency. Instead, he comes in in typical Ben Franklin manner and asks for conciliation. "We're all Federalists. We're all Republicans." And the most brilliant thing he says, "If some of you don't agree with what I say, come and stand before us. You're free to speak." That's what it means to be an American. I am, I don't even know where I'm going with this, but I'm a Ukrainian. I was born in Ukraine. And when 4th of July came, and I'm on Facebook, and I'm looking at all the people say, "Don't celebrate the 4th of July. Who cares about the darn country?" We're having this discussion because of people like Jefferson Madison, because they allowed it. And Jefferson wrote his first draft of the Declaration. Very few people know this. I was on the radio talking about this. He begins with the notion of equality. Says all people are, are equal. He doesn't start with liberty. It's not in the Declaration, you'll remember. All people are equal. Equality, he deduces liberty. Fascinating move. And people say, "Well, why did Jefferson think all people were equal?" Clearly, that's not true, right? And if you look at people, we're not all people. Why would anybody think we're equal? Well, if you study Jefferson's works on morality, his work on the moral sense, Jefferson talks about the moral equality of all people, and he concedes in notes on the Constitution that all people have the same moral sense, faculty, black, non-black, white, all people are morally equal and from equality. We're all deserving of liberty. And in the excised version of his Declaration of Independence, he has a list of several, 24 grievances or so, against King George III, the last of which is enormously long passage that talks about the egregious move of the king, and he blames the king, and the king alone is devious. But he says, "He prostrated his negative when he could have blocked, if he could have blocked the slave trade." And he says, when he takes a group of people and he calls them capital M, capital E, capital N, and a lot of scholars said Jefferson didn't mean to include blacks in this declaration. If you look at his first draft, he capitalizes men. They're human beings and deserving of the same right. I will argue, and I've written a book on Jefferson, on race and slavery. Name one person in Jefferson's day who did more to eradicate the institution of slavery than Thomas Jefferson. One person. No one. No one has. And this is a matter of not chugging, it's a matter of doing your research. Jefferson worked tirelessly.
Thank you. Your five minutes is up, sir. Your five minutes is up. Thank you.
Philip Andrew Hamilton.
All right. Well, esteemed board members, thank you for having me speak today. I actually ran for the Virginia House of Delegates representing Charlottesville, part of Alamo County in 2011. And if I had been elected, I would have been legislating in a similar way that Delegate John Maguire has been doing. You got to fight to preserve our history. I'm a descendant of George Mason IV, who wrote the Virginia Declaration of Rights that guarantees the freedom of speech and the freedom of religion that's enshrined in the Bill of Rights. Now, I've been fighting for history all these years. I run the website, HamiltonHistoricalRecords.com. And when I went to Charlottesville, Virginia, I was distraught when I found out that they were going to take down statues of Joe Robert, Edward Lee, Stonewall Jackson, of Lewis and Clark, Zachariah, and of George Washington's father. Those folks were Thomas Jefferson's friends. And instead of taking down historical monuments, what we should have been doing is building on our history. When I spoke at the Charlottesville City Council meeting last year, what I told the council members is, "Why don't we erect statues dedicated to the UGAU..." why don't we erect statues dedicated to the UGAU units? There were 68 soldiers who went to University of Virginia who fought for the Union. You see Gettysburg, you see Antietam, you see other parks up north. And they show both Confederate and Union statues. And that's really the ideal. We should show all sides of history. And that's what the mainstream media, they're not focusing on that argument, but we should be. But at the local level, we can change it. I'm hoping the board can have the guts to stand up for the history. Instead of changing the name of the library, why don't we build on Jefferson's legacy? Why don't we have more historical exhibits about Jefferson and Madison for members of the public to learn about? I see exhibits just right down the hall about the American Constitution and the history of it. I think that's great. Let's add more. Let's educate the public on these issues. And this is something I'm very passionate about. I'm hoping that the board will not consider name change. And I hope the folks are here, both sides of the issue. I hope that you will listen to all the speakers here today, hopefully have a change of heart in the future, and we will pray for you that you will. Well, thank you all for your time and God bless.
All right, Richmond. I live right outside of Richmond. And it makes me, when I drive down Monument Avenue and see all the statues that have been taken down. And for what? It isn't a matter of race. It has nothing to do with race. It's a night out of writing silk all over every surface in Richmond. And, and I am in opposition to any name changing, and that's, this is just the start. It'll continue. It'll be something every single day that wants to be taken out of our history. And I oppose any of that.
Novio.
Glad to thank you for gathering today to listen to the different viewpoints on, on Thomas Jefferson. Appreciate it. Thomas Jefferson should not be what the library system in central Virginia is named after. For some pretty simple reasons. He owned over 500 human beings, all of whom were Black African Americans in his lifetime. Saying that they were enslaved does not fully encompass their experience. They were chained. They were beaten. They were forced to do work against their will. They were raped. They were not given any money. They had no freedom. It's sometimes been compared to a concentration camp. If you have over 500 individuals, human beings, who are enslaved and forced to work for you, you don't give them anything in return. And you reap all the benefits of their labor, and you get to keep everything that they produce. You get to benefit from their sweat and their tears and their blood and from their, their children. Some of whom were the product of rape. Sally Hemings, I don't know the exact age, but she was 13 or 14 when she bore his first child. Her first child. That's rape. There's no such thing as consensual relationships between a grown adult man, probably in his 50s at that time, and an imprisoned young girl. We don't need to have the library system named after him because people come here and use it. It doesn't matter what race they are or how old they are. Because you could say, oh, we have to change it because Black and Brown children use the library here. And that's very true. We also have to change it because white children and white adults use the library system here to learn. And if they're here to learn, why, why do they have to have that name there? What about indigenous peoples? They're Americans too. Forced to be American, just as, yeah, just as descendants of slaves have been forced to be American in some way. Just hearing people speak earlier, they're saying, you know, Jefferson was looking out for all people. But was he looking out for women when he was raping a young girl? Was he looking out for indigenous people when he did the Louisiana Purchase? We act like that was between France and the US, but that was all indigenous land. He was a land speculator. That's why he wrote the Declaration of Independence. Because he didn't like the 1763 proclamation of, of King George that stopped land settlement at the peak of the Appalachian Mountains. He wanted to be able to take the land from indigenous people and sell it and make more money. He was bourgeoisie, the person earlier saying, you know, the whole Gulag bourgeoisie thing, whatever that was. It's like, he was bourgeoisie. He was one of the richest people in the world, and he didn't change his ways. So he's not an example for children and for people who are coming into this wonderful system to learn. Thank you.
Lawrence Segurne. Lawrence Segurne. Bill Byrd. I call it Lawrence Segurne.
Thank you. I'm going to address the board because I didn't come here to promote my political aspirations or any sort of self-aggrandizement. I came here with a plea to actually acknowledge history. And I came here as a person who went to Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology. I came here as a person who got two degrees from Jefferson University of Virginia. And I'm not a historian, but I have a master's degree in education. And I find the idea that I'm not educated enough about Jefferson to speak on him absurd and insulting. But I find it incredibly inciting the idea that Myra Anderson is misguided as the living proof of Jefferson's violent legacy, that her request is being treated in this way by the people in this room. The idea that wishing to change the name of the library is to erase history is tragic and ironic. I think it's very important to understand history and particularly the words and actions of Thomas Jefferson as it pertains to how it shaped this country and how it shaped the lives of the people who have had to live under its power. Jefferson was a Saxonist who at the Continental Congress of 1776 wanted to include the images of, quote, "the great Saxon chiefs from whom we claim the honor of being descended in the nation's field." Jefferson saw our nation as being explicitly an Engels vaccination. And he wanted that included at the time of this violent declaration. Jefferson also wrote in his Notes on the State of Virginia, which was published in 1785, that he advanced it therefore as suspicion only that the blacks, whether originally a distinct race or made distinct by time or circumstances, are inferior to whites in the endowment of both mind and body. Now, this writing that you just heard where he called blacks inferior, this wasn't just an inconsequential footnote. This was the most well-read piece of nonfiction in his time and well into the next century. Jefferson did not just support the project of white supremacy, but was indeed one of its main architects. And he urged those in power to build the very foundation of our nation upon white supremacy and to sustain it. Now, there are good people who have claimed that Jefferson wrote against, wrote works against the institution of slavery. But let's look at what Jefferson did. Because everyone here is so very interested in preserving history, I'd like to educate everyone. Jefferson was following just the beliefs of his time as a common myth. There were well-known organized groups of white settlers against slavery documented in the colonies as early as 1688, most of them Quakers. In fact, many of the audience would ask the question, who has done more for racial justice and for the liberation of Black people? John Woolman would be one of those people, a famous Quaker and abolitionist at the time of Jefferson that would have been well-known to him. Or the idea that Jefferson wrote against slavery and didn't believe in institutions. He had no point sought to free slaves, even though that was something that happened commonly for plantation owners during his time, including his own cousin, John Randall, who freed his place. But Jefferson did not wish to free a slave, nor did so would he. In 1814, a prominent plantation owner named Edward Cole went to Jefferson, having read his, quote, "anti-slavery" writing, and asked Jefferson's advice on freeing his own enslaved family because he wanted to do the right thing. And Jefferson refused to help them and condemned him for trying to do so, saying, "In the meantime, are you right in abandoning your property and your country with it? I think not." That's Jefferson's quote about being a Native American, selling them property. Jefferson's words and actions are very clear, so let us be very clear as well. If we claim to reject white supremacy as an ideology, then we must inherently reject its ideal laws. If you claim to reject white supremacy as having a place in our public institutions, then you must reject Thomas Jefferson as an appropriate person to hold the name of this public institution. No one is asking you to erase history. We are asking you to acknowledge it. The descendants of those enslaved at Monticello have asked for this change. They are the living history that matters. Quite frankly, my credentials don't matter. All these people, when they use their credentials, they don't matter as far as I'm concerned. When you look at the weight of the violent legacy of Jefferson, you need not look farther than the people who are asking you as living history to change the name. And more importantly, they're not just living history of the violent legacy of Jefferson.
Thank you.
They're living history of the resilience and resistance to erasing history.
Thank you. Thank you. Your five minutes is up.
Bill Hawkins.
Thank you very much. I'm glad we have an opportunity to come up here and speak. I apologize to the people behind me, they have to look at my back. I'm used to being a teacher, I taught for 17 years history. And I was planning on just coming here and introducing Dr. Halichuk, but I found out we cannot concede time. So I thought I'll go ahead and say my piece as well. This is a, first off, I think this is great. I think this is great where we can have people come in here from both sides of the issue, and they can express their opinions. And that's what opinions are, their opinions. If, but they need to be backed up by facts. And we've heard some very good arguments. We've heard people say different things, but it's the facts where it comes back to. And if anybody has ever been falsely accused, it's not a pretty place to be. It's a very difficult place to be because you want to be able to defend yourself, but there's no way, nobody for to, to, to defend yourself to when people are actually making accusations against you that are false. And that's what I've heard a lot today. I've heard a lot of false accusations. And the reason I say there are false accusations and they're actually facts is that if you actually study the man like Dr. Halichuk had done, then you'll find out that some of these things, some of these exaggerations, if you will, as well-meaning as they are, they're still exaggerations. You'll find out that if somebody's being falsely accused, one way, especially when it's falsely, that you try to change people's opinions is by doing it emotionally and by making accusations far worse than what really happened. Did Jefferson own slaves? Yes. Did Jefferson create slavery? No. Slavery did not begin with the United States of America. It did not begin with the Declaration of Independence. It was well before the United States was actually founded in Jamestown, right here in Virginia. So what I'm thinking is, why don't we get the facts and make sure it's the facts? Make sure it's the truth. I read one of Dr. Halichuk's books, and it was about Sally Hemings. He exposed some misquotes where people had gone into the primary documents, and then when they put it in their book, they changed the quote. If you go back to the primary documents, you see a difference. And so you guys have a very important responsibility. You're a judge. And there's a such thing as called due process. And what I hope you do as judges, since you're the one deciding this factor, I hope that what you'll do is you will get to the bottom and get to the truth. And by doing that, that doesn't mean that you censor people you disagree with, just like these people back here talking. I disagree with some of them, but they have the right to speak and I will listen to them. And that's what I hope you will do. And if I can, I would like to send each of you a doctor's, Dr. Halichuk's book so that you might understand.
Have you been getting my messages?
Martha, we can hear you. Please mute.
I have sent several to you.
Martha, 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 can you mute, please?
Send them in.
Sorry, go ahead.
Because that was when the judges not listened to me. So anyway, what I want you guys to do, I could send you the book, I mean, read it, do some research, now you guys know. But this stuff about censoring somebody, censorship is not where it begins. And censoring somebody's name off the library is not going to help anybody. Let's do the truth. Let's get to it. And if somebody's being falsely accused, let's defend them if they need defending. If it's true, then do what you have to. But if you do your research, you're going to find that these attacks against Thomas Jefferson is not true in the contexts they're being stated.
Bill Byrd. Bill Byrd.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the, I'll be exceeding, let's breathe. Since most of what's been covered by both sides couldn't be articulated better by myself. I'm here for one reason. I'd like to submit a letter, and we will do so electronically as well, from the Virginia Council, which is a group in Richmond that basically asks that you consider the first principles when making your decision here. And the first principles, of course, are the work in many, many ways of both Jefferson and Madison, what their personal motivations were. I don't think I could say what their personal histories were, perhaps not. But I only know that the first principles of released lightning from the bottle. Religious liberty, freedom of speech, freedom of association, freedom of the press, freedom of assembly, freedom of petition. And Abraham Lincoln once said, "You can say anything you want about me. You can do anything you want to me." And God knows all of that happened to him. "But you must hold sacred the principles in the Declaration. If you do nothing else, you must hold them sacred." Thank God, today around the world, we are still seeing people who do hold them sacred. The valiant fight of the Ukrainian people being one. The other antithesis to this is a person who obviously has no belief in the first principles, just as his KGB and communist predecessors didn't. And that's Mr. Putin, who is in this very moment conducting aerial assaults, massacres, forced deportations on, on the Ukrainian people. So remember where these first principles came from. Now, some will say they're a creature of Locke, Edmund Burke, but the first government documents that enunciated them clearly, and they did not take it as far as they could. That is a well-known historical fact. And of course, it was taken to its logical conclusion 80 years later, 70 years later. But the authors of these first principles were these two men for whom the library bears the name today. Were they perfect? No. Were they infallible? No. Did they have faults? Of course. But the first principles live on. They released lightning from the bottle. They released, as, as the hymn says, "The terrible swift sword." And unfortunately, those first principles are still being thought over around the world today. If nothing else, please remember where they came from. There is nothing in British law that codifies it as these documents did. You can say common law or, or the, the documents related to the Glorious Revolution. It was never, there is no British constitution. This codified the rights of man, who took, and only 10 years later, only 10 years later, it served as inspiration for a second great revolution, which had its excesses, its problems, and we all know the story of its rather unhappy conclusion, the French Revolution. So when considering whatever you do here, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, So when, considering whatever you do here, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, remember where these first principles came from, and I thank you very much.
Hello, may you, gents, speak today. Looking out at those here's worth the name change. I see times white supremacists go home and then more men. The main point that I would like to get across in my brief time here today, to dispel the myth that support the current name of these libraries comes up. I detest all forms of white supremacy. I also do not believe in disconnecting our society from our founders through that. Jefferson and Madison were not only instrumental figures in both the founding of the United States, but they also fought their entire lives to advance basic human rights. Thomas Jefferson called slavery a moral depravity and fought to end the trade of slaves in the kingdom. Some here did not, some here believe that he did not fight against slavery, and that's not dialogue. The obvious question, as I'm sure those who are, who support the name are thinking right now, is then why did Jefferson take part in this practice? Let me be clear about one thing, it was wrong for Jefferson to make his well-taught thing, and then an important factor in his right to inherit this sort of thing. But we have to understand that when they were in America, when they were in the British colonies, it was a large part of their world. Judging those who were instrumental in founding of our country by the standards of our modern day is not a way to approach this, and removing them from our libraries is exactly that.
Erica Williams Rodriguez.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. The black and brown people are teaching their children the true history of this nation's heroes. My children know that four hundred child slaves were born at Monticello. It is deeply inappropriate, at this point in time, with all that we know about Jefferson, to expect black and brown children walk into a place named after a man who would never have allowed them to read. The time has come to stop honoring the ugly legacy of racism and bigotry. In Germany, there are no statues of decorated SS soldiers, and there are no libraries named after Hitler. People say Jefferson was only doing what was normal in society for that time. It was not normal for many people who resisted slavery, for abolitionists who eventually fought and won the freedom of enslaved Africans. People say he did great things, but he certainly did not do great things for black and Indian people. People say, these people here today say, yes, Thomas Jefferson owned slaves, but he inherited them from his father. At the time, it was illegal to free slaves. That is not true. He had six hundred people enslaved during slavery. Jefferson owned these people, and his large property at Monticello made him and his family very wealthy. When he inherited thirty enslaved people from his father in seventeen sixty-four, at the age of twenty-five, Virginia Colony allowed enslaved people to be freed. At worst, he was a brutal slaver and racist. At best, he was a deep hypocrite. Most hypocritically, he attempted to expel white women who had birthed children with black men, despite his own fathering of children, Sally Hemings. This is not about preserving or erasing history, it is about acknowledging it. I can tell you that the black and brown youth of this community suffer the trauma of the legacy of the people whose names are on this library. Thank you.
I want to address a couple of things I've seen in this room. A sign that says white supremacy. Nobody's ever come up to talk to me. They don't know me. I bet you they haven't come up to talk to anybody in this room. I can guarantee that, but I pretty much make a bet on that. Number two, there was a gentleman up here about five speakers ago. He said Thomas Jefferson was not the originator of slavery. That's true. What was the origination of slavery? When did it happen? As best I can tell, it was thirty-five hundred BCE in Macedonia. Who were these people? They were blacks groups fighting other black groups in Africa. You better fight to the death, because if you lost, you're a slave. Now, let's step up to the United States time. In eighteen oh seven, the UK wanted to put in a naval blockade to block about five or seven countries. Well, that didn't sit well with a couple of the kings in Africa, black gentlemen. There are quotations supposedly from them, I can't guarantee it, but it's said to be true that they didn't want it to happen. It would take away their power and wealth. That's black on black. Nothing to do with white people. Everybody makes mistakes in their life, and we have to be remorseful. Getting old, forgot where I was going. I wish everybody the best.
Hi, thanks for having us today. My name is Anna, and I'm a member of Showing Up for racial Justice Charlottesville. I'm not going to say anything else that like hasn't already been said, a lot of information today, but I do want to talk about white supremacy. So one of my jobs as a member of Showing Up for Racial Justice Charlottesville is to educate people, white people specifically, about white privilege and white supremacy. I use a lot of historical examples when I talk about white supremacy, but I think the biggest, one of the biggest historical examples of white supremacy outside of the Holocaust is the transatlantic slave trade. So in my opinion, the, to venerate a person who owned slaves, who believed people who could be bought and sold, is to advocate white supremacy. Libraries are the ultimate safe places. Walking into a building and after a raid the slave owner for many marginalized people is inherently unsafe. You've heard a lot of rhetoric today, and I say rhetoric because it's, the language being used is purposeful, it's designed to confuse and deflect from the issues at hand. We call these dog whistles, but you may know what a dog whistle is already. So you might have heard terms like cultural Marxism, woke academic racism. These are all terms that we created by white supremacists to, they were engineered by the right to be able to say racist, sexist, homophobic things without actually saying them up front. I'm going to ask the library board to look past rhetoric and focus on the actual issue at hand, the petition calling to change the name. Don't let a small group of naysayers proselytizing their hatred of anyone who isn't them monopolize the conversation around this issue. I know these types of people very well. They will try to make this into something bigger than it actually is, and I'm asking the board to look past that and focus on the issue at hand, which is not venerating a white supremacist and a rapist. And I want to be clear, a thirteen-year-old can't consent, and a slave can't consent to their slaveholder. So this is an issue of rape. This isn't anything but that when it comes to people like Sally Hemings. So yeah, I thank you for bringing this, for letting us have this conversation, and if you want to learn more about white supremacy, I can answer any questions, that includes anybody who's in this room right now. Thank you.
Jane Williamson.
My name is Jane Williamson. I have lived in Charlottesville and Admiral area all my life. My father was a leader in the Civil Rights Movement in the nineteen fifties and sixties, and his name is on the jury round for his life. I've heard some really remarkable things said today, many of which I agree with, and so I'm going to keep my own remarks really brief. When I was here the last time, I listened to the boards of trustees talking to each other after comments had been made, and one comment made by Lisa Wolfork will be stuck in my mind. She said, "If we retain the names of Jefferson and Madison, we will not be honoring, we will not be living up to our values." And I thought to myself, what is she talking about? And I thought, thought about the writings of Jefferson and Madison, and the phrase is like, "All men are created equal." I thought about the right to life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness, the rights to freedom of religion, speech, and the press, the rights to equal protection of all, and so on. So I'm thinking, what is objectionable about that? Is it, well, maybe she, they, this, their words can't be heard by someone like her because they were slave owners? And then I'm thinking, you know, that doesn't really totally make sense either, because whites were not the only slave owners. There were many black, not as many, but there were black people in this country, free blacks who owned slaves. As a matter of fact, proportionately, what's the word? Anyway, proportionate to their numbers, they owned, they owned, there were more often to be slave owners than white people. So what, if, if the objection is to not living up to your values that are as promulgated by Jefferson and Madison, what values would Miss Wolfork and others who sympathize with her, what values are they talking about that they appreciate? What's left, it seems to me, is the values of the woke, of wokeism, or as John Water, who was a black professor and writer at Columbia University. These must be the values that she's advocating for. Wokeism, as I understand it, is a quasi-religious, quasi-totalitarian philosophy centered on race and focused on, I hate to say this, on a hatred of white people and everything much that's been built by white people over the last several hundred years. And I certainly feel that vibe in this room sometimes. The problem I have with that, they're certainly entitled to that point of view, but I think it's a dead end. There's no, this is not going to get us anywhere. We are so divided, we need to learn to love each other, support each other, help each other. We learn to, we need to learn to, to remember the things that we have in common, and I think this is just making things much worse. And lastly, as a young lawyer mentioned last, a month ago, he warned us about the right wing, who are still busily at work trying to destroy the, our democracy. And there, believe me, there are lots of people who are very upset about this whole woke movement. They don't, you don't hear from them because they're afraid to speak up, but they're there. And what choice do they have when, when it's time to vote? They're not going to want to support the Democrats, and I say that as a lifelong yellow dog Democrat. The only thing they can do is vote for a Republican. So I just throw that out there, be careful what you wish for. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, library board. My name is Peter Bryan, and I live in Amherst County, and I'm here representing myself as a concerned citizen, and also the Jefferson Council, one of our pillars, and the reason, one of the reasons we exist is to protect the legacy of Thomas Jefferson. Let me start out, if you don't mind, I'll go over here so I can see these folks as well as you all. I will start with two quotes. One, I'm sure is familiar to many people in this room. "I think this is the most extraordinary collection of talent, of human knowledge, that has ever been gathered together at the White House, with the possible exception of when Thomas Jefferson died alone." That statement was made by President Jack Kennedy in nineteen sixty-two at a dinner he was hosting for Nobel, Nobel Prize winners in the Western Hemisphere. That's quote one. The second quote, and as I've been listening to everyone in here, is probably far more profound. "Nothing in the world is more dangerous than sincere ignorance and conscientious stupidity." That was written by Martin Luther King. Twelve of the first eighteen presidents of our country owned slaves, including Ulysses S. Grant. Is slavery a vondation? Of course it is. It has existed since the dawn of history, and unfortunately, it still exists today. And so does ignorance. Ignorance is not stupidity. It is not racism. It is not a lack of intellect. It is simply a lack, a lack of knowledge of facts. Unfortunately, it forms a path that if blindly followed, leads to poor and very often one-sided decisions. History is full of poor decisions based on ignorance. Some have made the statement that Mr. Jefferson was a rapist, and accept as fact his paternity of at least one of Sally Hemings' children. To do so is to ignore the historical record about his character, the documented interactions with his slaves, and completely dismiss the findings of acknowledged expert scholars. We will never know with absolute certainty the specifics of what went on between various members of the Jefferson household and the Hemings family. That Sally Hemings was a slave is an undeniable fact. That the Jefferson family DNA is present in Hemings' descendants is an undeniable fact. Exactly whose DNA is not confirmed and remains a subject of vigorous debate. My point is simple. We cannot and should not judge historical figures through the lens of today's highly-charged social and political environment, and pass judgment on the value of these individuals' contributions based purely on their shortcomings. Rather, we should recognize that these men were human, examine and acknowledge their shortcomings, but measure their historical value against their contributions to humanity, and more particularly, to our country. I believe the ledger demonstrates that Mr. Jefferson's and Mr. Madison's contributions to our country and to the advancement of human freedoms as a whole far outweigh their shortcomings as both humans and their behaviors as a result of the times in which they lived. To attempt to change the name of this library honoring these two founding fathers simply because some believe they do not measure up to the social justice concepts espoused in today's society is denied, is to deny their contributions to our country. If the Declaration of Independence were never written, if the Constitution were never written, it is quite possible we would not have the privilege of debating an issue such as this today. Additionally, and finally, I attended the library board meeting last month and heard legal counsel for the board make a compelling case that the board has no legal authority to make a name change without the collective support of the various regional bodies, and it is my understanding that Louisa and Green County have gone on record in opposition to this proposed change. Consequently, I'm not completely sure why the item is still up for debate. Thank you for listening.
I'd like to just address that, the last comment before we have our next public speaker. That is indeed true that it is up to That is indeed true that it is up to the jurisdictions under the terms of the regional agreement to decide what the library's name is. We invite public comment on any subject at any meeting at any time. And that's why it's still on the agenda. We hope to, later on in this meeting, chart a path forward for the library, for the Board of Trustees, and for the jurisdictions. Thank you.
Jesse Rodriguez?
That's why all the of Canada.
Tony, that's the end of the in-person sign-up sheet for public comment.
Is there anybody else online that would like to comment?
An opportunity for anybody that just arrived?
Tony, I don't see anybody online making comment. There's a question in the room. If you'll make an opportunity for somebody who's lately arrived.
Yes, we want to respect everybody's time, including the board. But if someone else would like to speak in the public comment section, I think we can allow that.
Please come up and state your name and your jurisdiction of residence.
My name is Bert Ellis. I live in South Carolina, but I am a frequent resident of Charlottesville. I am the president of the Jefferson Council. My thoughts will be brief. I will follow my colleague, Mr. Peter Bryan's comments. But I would say that anybody in this room, or anybody on this planet, has negatives and positives. We all try to evaluate our friends, our leaders, and everybody else on balance. And Mr. Jefferson, that's his faults. They've been clearly delineated. He had an amazing amount of positives. He was a founder of this country, a founder of this university, and so many other things. And on balance, there is no other decision, I think, any rational person could make. And this is one of the greatest persons that ever walked on this planet. I think we all have to evaluate everybody on balance. That's what I ask you to do. But thank you.
So I believe that's it for public comments.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out today and expressing your opinion. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. We do have an agenda item for creating a task force going forward to talk about the library renaming and the petition to do so. We do have some other business to cover before then, but you're certainly all welcome to stay as, as long as you'd like. David, I think the next thing we had up was the policy committee report.
Yeah, that would be for Mike.
Okay, the policy committee met in mid-July. That was a, that was sort of a reschedule from the normal June meeting just to spread things out a little bit since we had a long meeting in June. We, the agenda, we covered a couple of policies. The first was suggestions, complaints, and feedback. And this was our second meeting where we talked about it. We did come away with a working draft.
Mike, can we hold on for one second? Mike, I'm sorry. Excuse me.
Yeah.
If you all would like to continue the conversation, please do so in the hallway so that the board can continue its meeting. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you all for coming. Okay, thank you, Mike.
Okay, suggestions, complaints, and feedback. One thing that, so we do have a working draft right now that's going to managers for feedback. And that'll come to the, I expect that at the next meeting, the policy committee will be able to finalize some language that we'll recommend to the, to the board. One note I'll make is there was some, I guess, sentiment among the committee that we can probably do more on the back end when we receive these suggestions and feedback. We're just talking about day-to-day types of items that we wanted to have some system or process in place to kind of consolidate those, identify trends and so forth. So some of our discussion was what was the right level of guidance to put into policy and what was the right level to leave at sort of the operational level? So I think we struck a balance there and again, managers will weigh in on that. But that's something I think, I think it's fair to say, David, that David is interested in sort of doing a little bit more in, in terms of how do we capture all the feedback, consolidate it, identify trends, analyze it, and, and sort of be able to, to benefit from that. The next policy we talked about was the equipment fund. And we decided to kind of put a pin in that until, because it's, it, it's just talking about some structural ways about how portion of the budget is treated. And some of that is reflected in the regional agreement, which we expect to be reviewed within the next year or so. So we're gonna kind of take, I think in general, there was, there's some specific language that we're interested in having broadened to give the library a little bit more flexibility. Again, David, chime in at any time if I'm, if I'm not capturing some of this. But, but the idea is to bring some of those thoughts to the regional agreement that would open up possibly the ability for that policy to be a little more broad. We also took an initial look at library card eligibility. That also intersects on partial, part of it in terms of out-of-area cards with regional agreement. But also there's, the discussion there was how to define or characterize teacher cards. We have a teacher cards initiative that we got some continuing education about a couple of months ago. And that needs to be accommodated in, in the library card eligibility policy. Again, it needs to have the, we want to be specific yet broad enough that it's, leaves the right level of flexibility for, you know, operationally to do things that we want the staff to be able to do. So again, that was just an initial look, but that's sort of a preview of one of the topics we're trying to get the right language on. We talked about the, there's an adult services policy. And you'll see that later in today's meeting as sort of a first reading of sorts. The policy committee recommend that we deprecate or basically remove that policy from the policy manual. And I can speak a little more about that reasoning when we, when we look at it. But basically, we kind of considered it to be superfluous. And you'll see the recommendation today that we, that we just slim, in the interest of a slimmer manual is better. We're recommending that this one doesn't add a lot of value. Lastly, we discussed a little bit, or we broached the idea of, does our public comment policy need to be, you know, reviewed or revisited? We had a little bit, at the last board meeting, there was a little bit of question back and forth about how should we handle the, the public commenters who were there? You know, is there a limit to how many? Is there a time limit? And we do have a, a, a policy in place that specifies a five-minute time limit, for, for example. It's a little bit vague in terms of whether there's a limit in terms of the number of commenters. So the question is, you know, was, was the policy committee interested in looking at that and seeing if there's any improvements we can make? And I think we are going to do that probably starting with the next meeting. I will mention that about five, five or six years ago, there was a similar issue where there were a number of commenters at one or two meetings. And a similar conversation happened. So it is something that was discussed a few years ago by the, both, first the policy committee and then the full board. So all, and I was at both of those, I was in attendance at both of those meetings. So I'll, I'll share my recollections of how those conversations went with the policy committee when, when we discussed. And I think that is, unless David, you have anything else to remind me about, that's, that's how, what happened. Yeah.
Just one other thing that the policy committee discussed, Mike, which is not a policy per se. But there was the discussion when we were talking about the equipment fund policy about, you know, that policy and whether or not there were other policies in place to describe the operational fund, state funding, and things like that. And I think that the policy committee was very interested in having staff work up some sort of infographic or explanatory tool to use to talk about all of JMRL's budgeting. This is the only one that's called out by a policy. The rest of them are either covered in the regional agreement or handled in the budgeting process. But it would be useful, and this is not really the policy committee's work to do, it's mine. But it would be useful to have a one-stop shopping for staff, library board members, to give to elected officials, to give to members of the public, anybody who's interested in how the budgeting process works for JMRL.
Yeah, so, thank you for reminding me. So it's not only sort of the process, but just the structure. We have an equipment fund, we have a materials budget, we have a general fund. And these are not really written down anywhere. I mean, we saw, we see them in, in a board member orientation, but there's, they're not really, there's not really educational resource for the public on that. So that's one part of the conversation was, well, this equipment fund policy serves to kind of tell the public about what that is. But as David pointed out, there's not, for these other structural pieces of the budget, there aren't similar policies. So the, the solution was, hey, let's, let's put it all together on one piece of paper. So kind of everybody can understand the, all the pieces and parts and how they, how they interlock. And different parts of it are funded in different ways and from different sources and are used in different ways. So, great. Okay, that's all I have. If there are no other comments or questions.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Thanks.
The next thing on the agenda was the revision of committee assignments for the upcoming year, the upcoming fiscal year. I, I have to say, one of the best parts about being president is I don't have to serve on any committees. Maybe that's the only good part of being president. I'm not sure. We'll see. But I just did want to review some of the changes that we potentially came up with. Thank you, David.
Frozen here.
Can you see, can you see it there? I can't see it here. Can everybody else see the screen share?
Looks like the screen share.
There it is.
There we go. Cool. Okay. So Wendy has very graciously agreed to be chair of the Budget Finance Committee. Thomas will be on that, and we've tapped Martha also to be on that in addition, in addition to Alita and Lisa. So that, I think, is a good group moving forward. The Technology Committee, Thomas, again, has agreed to chair that, so that, that will be good. I think there's some good work needs to be done there. Mike is on that. And some staff, of course, they meet as needed, as does the Budget Committee. A reminder to folks on the Budget and Finance Committee that budget season never really ends, but we'll get cranked up again probably in September as we begin to talk about what, what's happened going forward. On the Five-Year Plan Committee, Alita's been appointed to that, which will be great. Again, meets as needed. And the Policy Committee, Martha, always, we, I, I found out very early on in my first tenure on the board that being on the Policy Committee is great because you get a great understanding of how we do things and why we do things. So I'm glad that Martha has, has agreed to be on the Policy Committee. Mike and I had a little discussion earlier about, you know, is it time for Mike Powers to step down as chair of the Policy Committee? And I say heck no. Simply because he's done such a great job identifying policies that need work and generating other things like the Personnel Manual to get the great work that he did on that. So I would very much like Mike to continue as chair of the Policy Committee if that's, if that's possible. Those are the only other chair, changes, I believe. David, I think we, they cover all those?
Yeah, the only thing I thought Tony might be up for discussion is if Meredith was interested in taking over his chair or anything. She and Kathy and Mike and Ellen wanted no changes. And if Alita is really okay with being on three committees. So I just thought if, if anyone wanted to, to discuss that, it was, it was open now, but otherwise I think this looks great.
Okay, sounds good. And, and thank you, everybody, for all, all your work on all of those things. So let's see, next up, I believe on the agenda was the approval of the ARPA and the Friends Endowment.
Yeah, Wendy.
Is Wendy the liaison?
Yeah, she's the liaison to the Friends, we see group somehow, we cut off the end of her name.
Okay, just asking.
Wendy, Wheaton, Craig.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, David, I give it over to you.
Okay, I've been updating you all for the past year about this project to add exterior holds pickup lockers to several branches. The idea here is, is twofold. One, it will help extend library hours outside of branch hours. So people who are working schedules that don't work with their branch library will be able to go pick up materials after hours. And two, it was just that COVID mitigation, initially it was a COVID mitigation thing where people would be able to pick up outside. We are still offering telephone pickup service at quite a few of our branches on demand. It's, it's certainly tailed off in the last six months or so. But at any rate, it's time to pay for these things. A contract has been signed. The site work is being done at these locations. They need power and electricity outside. And then these lockers are coming in. Just to remind you all that these are funded entirely by the State Library's share of the American Rescue Protection Act. So it's ARPA money from the State Library. And then it is also the Friends of the Library Endowment Fund. One, it's the fundraising for Nelson County that's paying for Nelson Counties. And then two, the Friends have agreed to pay for up to two other lockers. So the library needs to make this expenditure, but these funds will be reimbursed between the State Library and the Friends of the Library. Since this is not something that was in your fiscal '23 budget, it needs the approval. It's over $10,000. It needs board approval. So I'm seeking a motion to authorize JMRL to spend up to the total amount here, which is $95,616.30 on these exterior holds lockers.
Do I hear a motion to move forward with the expenditure?
I move this to Alita Childs.
And a second?
I second. This is Martha Ledford.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great. So David, remind us just quickly where, where each of these is going.
Oh, Kayla's online, so she'll correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe it's going to be in the city at Gordon Avenue, in Scottsville, in Croze, Green, Louisa, Nelson Libraries. So every place except for Central and Northside.
Okay. There's
Yeah, one other note, Tony, Croze is getting the, the double locker because we're anticipating the most usage at Croze.
Has nothing to do with the trustee from Croze being president of the board. Okay, I feel much better. That's good. We also wanted to talk about the Friends Endowment expenditures. David, you want to talk about that?
I'm sorry, those are rolled into the same item. They're, they're going to help pay for this. So the, the expenditure the board just authorized is going to be reimbursed by a combination of ARPA funds from the State Library and the Friends of the Library Endowment Fund.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you. Next up, the first reading of, trying, thinking about removing the policy 4.31. Mike can chime in here, but as he mentioned, this is really the mission of Adult Programming and Reference Services Department. We have many other departments in the library system, obviously. And we have, you know, we have young adult programming, we have children's programming and so forth and so on. And they don't have a policy. So this is kind of a historical artifact. And the Policy Committee, I think, Mike, correct me again if I'm wrong, thought that perhaps this was just redundant going forward. Did I miss, did I get that right?
That's correct. So we, we're recommending that this be deprecated, as we've done with a couple other policies in recent months. So today just serves as an initial, you know, quote-unquote, reading of that. Our usual process is to read a new, a policy change at one meeting and then vote on, actually vote, just, you know, vote and discuss at the, at the subsequent meeting. So this would come up for a vote, the proposal to remove this from the policy manual at the, at the next full board meeting. So if there's any questions or comments, we can begin discussion now. And then there'll be an opportunity to discuss before a vote next month.
Any comments?
So you're just saying that all departments then would be covered in the, under the library's larger mission as opposed to saying this department has this different mission or?
Right.
Yeah, it would, essentially, even without a specific policy, you know, procedurally, the staff and the director have chosen to carry out the library's mission by, you know, by segmenting into Young Adult Department, Children's Department. And this is just one, kind of as Tony was saying, of, of multiple services that staff has come up with. So the, the thinking is, why is, why is there, we're doing, we're doing fine with these other services without a policy saying, hey, staff and director, you We're doing, we're doing fine with these other services without a policy saying, hey, staff and director, you, you must specifically have a chi, a chi, a children's department. So what, what would, you know, so the thinking is, well, there's no reason, there's no necessity to tell staff that you, you must specifically have an adult programming and references department. I anticipate that that department is going to continue in exactly the same way. It's just, it's just a matter of where is that? What level is that decision made at? Is it made at a policy and a governance level? Or is it made at a sort of an operational level? And so that's really what we're talking about is just moving that to the operational level like other departments.
That makes sense. I, I also think that there must be someplace where David has specified what these departments are actually supposed to do. And that we don't necessarily need it as a policy. I don't think, I see anything in here that says that a, that a, a library is supposed to have these departments. It just says this is what their mission is.
Right.
One of the places that that's kind of, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tony.
Yeah, Meredith, when Mike brought this up, one of the first things that occurred to me was, you know, this is something we do. This is a procedure. You know, this, this is something that we offer. Okay, this is a service. And as you, you pointed out, Mike pointed out, other services don't have separate mission statements from the library's mission statement. So, you know, it's just, you know, an anachronism. Go ahead, David.
I was just going to say two things. One, Meredith, thank you for asking. We ran this by the Reference Department to review. They agreed. It basically says two things. Here's the mission of the Reference Department. Well, the Reference Department's mission is JMR's mission. And the other said, we're going to do these types of programs. And we do have a very lengthy and pretty good program policy and procedure. So both of these things are already covered in other places and, and the feeling was just mostly that this is some redundancy that is being reviewed on a 10-year basis, but you know, we don't necessarily need this policy.
Make the Policy Committee of the future's job a little easier.
One less thing to repeat.
Well, that's literally true because this is, this came up as part of a scheduled review. So we, we looked at it, not because I got out of bed one day and said it would be a good idea. It's because, hey, it's 10 years now, we got to look at this and what, why are we looking at it? I will point out one other thing that came up in the discussion, which is the policy manual has a couple of purposes. One is to tell the director and staff, hey, you got to do certain things. Another is to tell employees, here's what you need to know. You know, and the, and the employee manual has served to kind of as a quick reference to some policy level stuff. And the other purpose is to inform the, the public, hey, here's stuff you need to know about how we operate as a library. So this, to me, is something we, that the, that the would be on a list of things that the public needs to know about. And so, but my my preference for that is that we would have a more of an organized services directory or a, a listing. Because this is just one of many services, if you're, if you need reference services. It doesn't have to be at a policy level. It can be at, at sort of an organized way where we communicate that all in one place. The new website does have a services section that I think is a great step in that, in that direction, but we've talked about other ways to communicate that listed services in the past. So that's, I'll just make a little show for that as, as something that kind of came, came back to the forefront as part of this discussion.
So we'll, we'll bring this up again in August for a, a formal vote whether we want to delete the policy, deprecate the policy, I guess is the official term. So. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Library Name Change Working Group. Let me, David, of course, gave us quite a, a good bit of background last month at our meeting about the historical background of the, and name of the library, also the legal opinions that we've garnered and some of the work that's been done up to that point. I think one of the things that's important to remember, again, we said this, I, I said this just a little bit ago, but it's important to remember that it is not up to the board to decide the name of the regional library system. That is up to the jurisdictions. Jurisdictions have the final say in how this, if this is done, how it's done, when it's done. Now, as we all know, the regional agreement is up for review, the usual five-year review this fall. But what David and I and several board members would like to propose is that we form a working group to handle recommendations or fact finding or both for a potential library name change. And I've talked to Mike and have also talked to Lisa, who unfortunately couldn't be here today, who volunteered to be on that working group, to be on that task force. Pull things together, come up with a framework for how we would address the issues, how we would move going forward. How we would also work with community resources. And there are a number of people in the community who, of course, dealt, have dealt with this similar kind of issue. So what I was proposing here was a working group that had two trustees on it. And I don't want to say that those are the only two trustees. If anyone is, has a really burning desire to be on this working group, this task force, happy to consider that going forward, be, you know, if, and I give people the, the chance right now to, to, to say so. Several members of the community, two, three folks from the community, again, maybe people who have volunteered to be a resource to the library on the name change issue. And also some folks who, of course, have expressed desire on both sides of the issue. And then David, as sort of an ex officio member of such a, such a group and probably other staff as well. I think having dealt with many, many working groups in my working life, the, the smaller, the better, but you don't want it too small. But there's a logistical issue of getting everybody together for meetings. There's also, of course, you want to make sure you get enough input. So I think what I'm proposing here is that we have a group eh, probably around 10 folks maybe, that would then hear input from the public, of course, and hear input from other resources in the community. And then come back to the board with a, a framework for how they want to go forward. And then, you know, potential for where do we take this from here? So I throw that out there and I'd like to hear folks' comments and, and discussion about that.
I'm curious, do we, do we feel like we need to have representatives of the branches? I mean, are the, I mean, are, are they going to be coming forward and making this decision? Would it be important at the beginning to have them involved? Or what, what are your thoughts?
That's a good question. David, do you have any thoughts on that?
Meredith, you mean staff member, staff members from the branches?
Well, no, I just meant the, from those jurisdictions, because if we ultimately have to have, for instance, if the working group came back and said we want to change the name, or we want to alter the name slightly, or we want to add another name, whatever they decided that they thought was the recommendation. If we, if we don't have people from Louise and Nelson, et cetera, or is it just going to sort of? I mean, is, is what's, what would be the point of the working group if we don't then have any buy-in from?
Well, my, my understanding was that we were going to try to come up with a recommendation for this board, which this board would then base to those jurisdictions. Along with some reasoning and some sort of output. You know, like here's a report, here's a, something like that to be, to be read. I think this conversation is going to have to happen at a jurisdictional level. You know, so this is a way for the library to kind of gather feedback and bring it to our jurisdictional partners. Rather than have them uh, you know, jumping right in right now, but it, it's, if this board would prefer that, then I think we're talking about just going right into the regional agreement review and engaging in this with our jurisdiction. Without
Meredith, one of the things that, that I thought would be useful for, for a group like that is to, you know, examine alternatives. You know, I mean, we obviously, in the public comment periods and certainly the stuff that we've received, you know, as trustees, it's been, it's been fairly polarized, you know, yes, no. Okay. And one of the things that I've always valued about the library and the library system and, and being on the board was our ability to come up with solutions that worked for as many people as possible. So that was, that's sort of my utopian hope here is that, you know, we, we could still have something that will may, maybe not make everybody happy. But at the same time, you know, we'll, we'll show what a diverse organization the library is and what, you know, what we stand for in our mission. So that, that was, that's my hidden, that's my not so hidden agenda.
I mean, that makes sense. I just, I'm just curious if this is a way, I mean, I just don't want it to appear that this is a way that we've gathered a sort of small group together to sort of take the comments and shuttle them over this way. And then in the end, there's nothing that comes out of it. I mean, and, and you have said that there's a working group in general that is supposed to examine every five years. Is that correct?
Yeah, the regional, the regional agreement is, is reviewed by the jurisdictions every five years. And the last time it was reviewed, David, I don't think any substantive changes were made. Is that right?
No, it was basically reviewed as part of the annual budgetary meeting that happens between the five jurisdictions. So it was pretty cursory at that point. There was no real, there were some discussions about some things that the library was interested, the library brought up the, about a area fee at that point, a few other points that came up, but nothing changed. Nothing was amended in the regional agreement.
Mike, did you want to say so?
Yeah. David, do you want to say a few words? If, if we did as a, the board decide to send this to the Regional Agreement Committee because, because ultimately, if it, if there is a yes or no, it's going to have to come from the jurisdictions via the regional agreement. That's the legal. That's the legal counsel we've received. But my question for you, David, can you review briefly who participates in a regional agreement review and what that process looks like and who those participate? Trustees are not participating at that, at that level at that time. I have lost David.
No, we, we, you were breaking up.
And maybe others. Okay, I'm asking David just to, to tell us who does the, how that regional committee usually operates and who participates in it usually.
Yeah, the, the regional agreement stipulates that it's one representative from each jurisdiction. And to be organized by myself, basically. So what I would do is reach out to our jurisdictional partners and collect from them, like who would they would like to represent their jurisdiction on the regional Agreement Review Committee. In the past, that committee, I think the last one that I looked at was the, after the, the 2013 was the last signing, but the work really started in the 11. And at that point, there was, that group then met and agreed to get a little bit more input. But generally, the regional agreement says one representative from each jurisdiction.
Does that help? Does that clarify that?
I, I guess I was confused because I was under the impression that that group and the working group were sort of the same thing. But it sounds like you're saying we're going to have this intermediary group from the community with trustees and staff who are just going to look at this issue in a more fair and even way as opposed to saying yes, no, but like what could be, whatever. And then that will go find it to the jurisdiction.
Yeah, and then we, we would, the working group, the board would take that report to the jurisdictions as part of the regional agreement review process. And that's the way I sort of envisioned it happening.
Okay.
But the, but the the jurisdictions, they would have the final, final say. Whatever are, that, whatever that, that, uh, that groups comes up with, right?
Yeah, exactly, Alita. That's, that's, you hit the nail on the head.
Wendy, are you trying to, I think Wendy might be trying to comment.
I don't see Wendy at all.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, Wendy. Go ahead.
Oh, finally. I'm sorry, we've had a thunderstorm and and 10 other things. So I just want to make sure that kind of piggyback on what everyone's saying. I have been directed from my Board of Supervisors to oppose any name change. So that has to be front and center for whatever, you know, the group that, that you put together comes up with. I like your description, Tony, of coming up with a solution. Or at least some ideas, some, some kind of response really in a, in a in an inclusive way and getting comments and putting ideas together. But I think it's important to remember that if that were to, if that were to be a product of the committee, I would, as a board member, not be able to support it. So make sure that if you all would just keep us updated on, you know, the kind of things you're thinking of so that I will, you know, I, I can kind of digest those and, and, and give you a little input, even though I'm not on the committee. That, that would be helpful to me.
And that, yeah, I think that would be helpful to everybody to, to have it as an agenda item. You know, an, an update from, from the working group as to, you know, how, how we're going, things we, things that have happened and so forth and going on. And Wendy, I certainly appreciate, I appreciate your position too. So.
And, and I certainly don't want to speak for Lisa, but I could not interject because I couldn't get my audio to work. But the, the woman who referenced Lisa's comment, and I just know, because I was talking with Lisa at that time, she was not referring to the first principles when she said we would be abandoning our principles, or values, excuse me, she didn't use the word principles. She was referring to the values we enumerated in our mission statement. Which the last one specifically, which was about diversity, welcoming the community, everybody feeling comfortable. And I am, I'm very sorry, I didn't, I wasn't able to interject that clarification, but I think that's important.
Yeah, very good point.
It was a misrepresentation of her.
Yeah.
I think. And I'm, and I, again, I'm secondhand.
Any more discussion? Did, did, did we make a motion to create such a working group? Somebody like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to create a working group.
I know.
Thank you, Martha. I hear a second.
Yes. Wendy, I'll start.
Thank you, Wendy. Alita, Wendy beat you to it.
I was saying Wendy had already done that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Great. Thank you, everybody. I know this is, uh, this is a, a difficult challenge ahead of us and I, I really certainly appreciate Mike and Lisa stepping forward to take, take charge of this and, and go forward with it. Uh, which leads us to the Library Director's Report. Mr. Plunkett.
Tony, if I could just say one last thing on that issue. Since this board last met, I did email you all, but the library did have to stand up a, a website, jmr.org/libraryname because we were getting so much disparate comments from all sorts of sources just to try to streamline it and get it all in one place. So that is up and running. You can pass that along to anybody. And we are still updating the publicly posted feedback there. There's a running doc, hundreds of pages at this point, of public feedback that's come in.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, David. It's a great idea.
You're welcome. Okay. Couple of things I wanted to run through. One, if you all saw the daily progress yesterday, you might have seen an opinion piece about a group using Louisa County's meeting room after hours a few weeks ago. That they turned away a member of the public who came to attend but didn't want to sign their name upon arrival. So just so you all know, JMR is aware of this issue. We will be in touch with the group that signed out the meeting room to ensure they understand the parameters of JMR's meeting room policies, which is that if a member of the public signs out a meeting room for a public use, it is free and open to all, so that they will understand that any further violations of said policy may result in a loss of meeting room use. So just in case you saw the progress yesterday and thought, what was this about? It was a group using the meeting room in Louisa. Louisa has a separate entrance that the public can get to outside of library hours. So they check the key out to people to use. This meeting was outside of library hours. And the person who was turned away did call the branch manager and speak to the branch manager and eventually spoke to me as well before writing into the daily progress. I wanted to update the board as this is the first meeting of a new fiscal year. The financials are not finished for the end of the fiscal year. AJ is working on those. AJ is currently on parental leave. His family has expanded, so good news for him. Yes, but we expect him back next month. I'll give you some update on some other statistics, though. Year-end statistics, as a system, JMR hit 1.6 million checkouts, which is something to which is something to be very proud of, I think, during COVID, considering the impact COVID has had on operations. This is 40% better than last year and it reflects a full year of being open with regular hours. Still shy of 2019's high mark of 1.7 million, but it's pretty close there. Digital circulation is now the second busiest branch, if you recall it, behind the Northside Library here. Northside checked out 388,000 items in fiscal year '22 and digital content was 341,000 items, just to give you a snapshot there. So that's about 21% of the usage was digital. That's actually a bit down from the year before, which JMRL had limited service during parts of the year. So that was the best option for them. And some summer reading stats from this summer, 3,100 registrants, more six-year-olds are participating than any other age group, just in case you're interested. It's a close race between six-year-old and nine-year-olds. 792,000 minutes read. This is all thanks to Beanstack. We're tracking that. 2,678 prizes redeemed. So that's books, toys, incentives for participating in the program. And 1,060 participants have completed the challenge. So this was the first summer reading where we moved to that new Beanstack platform. We still offer non-online options, paper options for families that prefer that or need that. But it has been interesting to be able to track usage and it's certainly way up from last summer. And the book return that I mentioned last month, I believe, is up and running in the town of Louisa. It's very popular so far. So it is outside a shopping center there. People can return books outside the shopping center and staff will bring them in and check them in at the library. And I just wanted to remind the board of the upcoming end to regular hybrid meetings. So we can put that on the agenda if you like, Tony, to discuss next month. But the, the, excuse me, the state of emergency ordinance that Tony read at the beginning of this meeting, the state of emergency expired six months before September. Then there's six months to kind of reconstitute local governance. So in September, that means the board will have to resume all in-person meetings with only limited hybrid options. So next month, I can go through what those options are and what your choices will be moving forward. And that's all I have to report today. Tony, you're muted.
There's that funny little button down there. What does that do? Any other matters folks want to discuss, bring up before we talk about future agenda items? Okay.
I did find it funny to see where the storm was based on who was flickering in and out. Thanks, everyone, for hanging in.
Yeah, you know, if you, if you're going to have meetings in the summer at three in the afternoon, I think you have to expect that.
I had it first and I was glad I was on mute because the thunder was quite outstanding.
Yeah, Croze seemed to miss it this time. So for future gen items, I guess we'll have a report from the working group, first report from the working group. We'll have that second reading for the removal of the adult programming and references, reference service department policy. Other items, David?
The policy committee should be meeting before the August meeting. So there should be a policy committee report.
Okay.
And we're, I'll have to get with Thomas, who's the new chair of the technology committee, but we're overdue for a technology committee meeting as well.
Okay, great.
Tony, the only other thing is that usually the board in August or sometime thereabouts performs a self-evaluation.
That's right.
So we use the state of, the state libraries format for that, basically. And I could get with you to talk about how best to collect that information.
Sounds good. All right, we will do that. Any other agenda items folks would like to see in August? Okay. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tony.
Good night.
Talk to you soon.
Take care.
Thank you all.